Welcome everybody to the Ottawa City Commission Study Session. What's our public comments? Do we have any?
We do, we had George Ogilvy.
Okay, we're going to come on up. Say your name.
George Ogilvy.
Good to see you.
Hey, how you doing?
Good.
It's one of those reading this and only got three minutes, so I don't want to have him down here leaving me out.
Hey.
George Ogilvy, I've been in Ottawa since two thousand and four, home legacy homes of Ottawa. Primarily building homes to sell or rent. I especially enjoyed buying dilapidated homes and turning them down, building them on better art material. When I was asked about what would be interesting in purchasing seven twenty South Main, I jumped at the opportunity. Immediately knew it would make a great Oxford House. I spent right out one year completely got in and rehavin'. It's now like a brand new five bedroom, three floor bath home. It's about to come out as first Oxford House. Oxford Houses are a network of self-run, self-supported recovery houses for recovering alcoholics and drug addicts. Each Oxford House is without missing most weekly democratic golf meetings to ensure the smooth operation and financial viability of the house. On a monthly basis, the houses in the geographic area get together to share their common experiences in order to assure that all Oxford Houses operate in a way that preserves the good name of Oxford House and encourages more experiences, experienced houses to help newer ones. Our community, like so many others, is struggling with drug and alcohol dependence, as well as homelessness in our population. The Oxford House are ran by the people that live there. Central members are interviewed by the existing members living in the house at which they are applying. They must have thirty days clean, a deposit, rent, and a job to maintain their responsibilities. If anyone in the home thinks another has drank alcohol or used drugs, there are urine tests given immediately. And if positive, they will be given one hour to leave the house. I believe there's a hundred and sixty Oxford Houses in Kansas, uh, during the Latham lawns, Kansas City, Hayes, Hutchison Dock City, Manhattan, Pittsburgh, Vegas, Lining, and several other cities, and now Ottawa would be proud to have our name on their list.
Great. Thank you. As I told you before on the phone, we certainly appreciate this. This is something that I think will not only help some of the citizens that necessarily need it, uh, but will certainly help maybe with some of that.
We do.
We do, we do. We certainly agree. But hopefully, hopefully help us some of that homeless too.
Right.
Get somebody inside and give them some help for sure. So I, I appreciate what you've done, but thank you. Any other public comments?
One.
Great, thank you. Public comments on items to be placed on the regular city commission agenda, which is our advantage from our March sixth study session, March thirteenth study session, and our March fifteenth regular meeting. If you have a chance to review those. If there are any changes, then move those on to our agenda. All right, items for presentation and discussion items, now it's a review of our February monthly reports. Mr. Gray, can we go first?
I actually did not have any questions this morning.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Um, I just had a few clarifications and as everyone around the room knows, it's probably rhetorical stuff that you already can point out. Um, but on page eleven, um, where we're talking about budget, um, kind of a review of the budget expenditures for the year so far, um. If you at the top. Yeah, like, oh, it's the same line. No, it's right. At the top, it says that sixty percent of the budget here has been completed at the end of February. But then further on down, it says that the libraries has expended forty-eight percent of their budget. I know that, um, you can probably explain to the population, and if you're anybody who is reading that, um, why that looks different, right? Yes. Right. Here, yeah, um, so with the way that we send the appropriations to the library is as we receive them, we receive our two largest distributions of property taxes from the county in January for what came in in December and in June for what came to them in May. Um, everything else we might, might be much smaller distributions. Um, so they get the bulk of their money in January and then another large chunk of that in June. So that would be why theirs is going to look a little bit different. They're not expenditures that the library has made, but expenditures that where we have sent them their appropriations for the budget that is property tax related. Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, and then further on, um, in the HR report on page thirty-six, um, the, um, two graphs that are there. Purposely you've taken out the, um, the police officer talent acquisition and then everything else on the bottom that just said standard. It's everything else, right? Yeah. They encompasses everybody else that here, um, attempting to place into positions. Correct. Okay. Want to make the, I understood that. I can rename it. Oh, no, I don't care. I just wanted just somebody to, um, if they were looking at it. They understood that. That's why the numbers look different. That's why the, uh, the, yeah. Well, it's all different. Um, Chief Wyngardner, on your report on page forty-one, it appears as though, um, in February, and I'm assuming still possibly in March, well. God, she's not here. You did do this. Um, yeah, three open positions in department. Um, have we filled any of those or is that still an ongoing search?
Still ongoing, uh, still have, uh, very few applicants that are coming in. We're doing background investigations on one that has a correction point two. But we still have, we have two that are in there right now. Um, one is getting very close to nearing the end of the background. We've got over some of the biggest hurdles and another one is standard background thing, so. We're still, um, still looking for at least one.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm a chess player, I don't know if that's a polygraph thing or whatever that's called.
Yes, after, after the, again, let me end up or over here, but, uh, after the, after the initial background investigation, well, initial, it's pretty in-depth. We talked to pretty much everybody that we find and has ever contacted this person, employers, ex-boyfriends, ex-girlfriends, you name it. Um, if we can get through that and we go into a polygraph phase and we have a Twitter pro, uh, or a that works with us um, to go through in detail every part of their history until we're, we're satisfied and booked.
Right.
Yeah, like that.
Oh, no. Um. Our Director of Utilities is going to start. Um, can you tell us a little bit about, I know you gave us an update on just a few weeks ago about the water tower, but um, can you tell us a bit about more about where the process is on the new water tower?
Water tower is in the process. Uh, contract has been signed. Uh, looking at a pre-construction meeting before fifth, actually. And so, uh, that would kick off the project. Uh, we have a couple of areas that, uh, that we're still working on that may change the project a little bit. Uh, but otherwise, yeah, that project is just moving forward.
Excellent.
Moving forward, pre-construction meeting and then after the pre-construction meeting, I believe the contractor has one year to have the power and plus.
That's what I asked was about a timeline, so thank you for doing that. Thanks for taking us and not being on that. Um, my last, uh, actually comment is just to thank Olivia because maybe your last meeting that you're here to talk about monthly reports and I'm sure you're gonna give us the update, but it's one of the things you for all that you've done for all of these street. Thank you. Yep. Nice.
Mr. Clay? I will, I guess I can take off wherever you come up off. Jay, we on that, um, on those openings. We obviously it's opinion based, you think? What could we do to make those position more attractive, I guess, in terms of getting applicants? Do you think it's already about reach? Is it anything with that position that we're not getting? Um.
Be real hesitant to give you a black and white answer on that. There's a lot of things that go into policing in twenty twenty-three. Um. The um, kind of general view of the public of policing, um, since about two thousand and fourteen, it's been, uh, the optics of policing has been, has been difficult, uh, especially, you know, with today's social media. Um. Thankfully, we haven't had those problems here. Um. But then you start looking at other things and our relationship to Johnson and, uh, Johnson County in the metro area. And the way that they're paying officers now is, is very, uh, hard for us to measure up to right now, but, um. But for people that want to live here or don't want to be in the metro, um, we do really well.
Yeah.
So I can't do any, there's, there's, there's so many things to this problem that if I get that answer, I would, I would be, I would be writing articles somewhere.
Yeah. Um. On sixteen, I wanted to point out, I do, I like seeing the, the sales tax growth. Um. I was sure it's an update on maybe the number on S B or the, you know. No, they don't.
Local to that.
What?
They did us a favor and they took the local sales tax.
Oh, okay, perfect, so. Brilliant, um. On page fifteen, looking at that, I like, um, I followed up, I saw, I think our earnings, the maturity on those just shot at six hundred thousand dollars. I think it's fantastic. Um, I wanted to see on that, do we have either stipulations or a plan in place for, um, where those earnings will go? Are those earmarked for anything? Do we have restrictions on what we can do with those, those types of fund or any of that?
You wouldn't care?
Okay.
Sure. Um. A lot of those, those interest earnings will go back to the funds in which they had the heaviest amount um, invested at that time when those earnings come due. So it'll be based on, um, their split basically. Yes, yes. So then however that fund is set up is what your restrictions would be on how you can spend it. So if it's going to a utility fund, then it would be used for that utility. If it's going to the general fund, then it would be used for general purposes. If it were something that we're going to say the debt service fund or a specialty, a special revenue fund that had restrictions on spending, then we would have to adhere to those two. Okay. But as far as some of those that are more general in nature, we don't have a plan yet, but it is on our list of things that we do want to we want to make sure that we have a plan in place for those.
Awesome. Right, yes. Um, let me sort, I heard you start on fifty-three. Um. On desk, on the sidewalk replacements on Fremont and Willow that were unacceptable. Do we have more information on, on that? Is what, why did I have to move unacceptable? I need to get our next round coming up, um, just to kind of better prepare ourselves for this. You know, upcoming round.
Absolutely, uh, would be a real present to you sit here and throw someone under the bus in the public meeting, to be quite honest with you. But I'd be happy to talk to you about that afterward, afterwards.
For sure. Um, and then the only other thing I wanted to call out, um, is page seventy-two, I followed the photo of the prettiest lady I know who worked in the building, um, on the libraries. Not biased, but it was exciting to see that, so. That's all.
Pretty cool. There's four ladies on.
Say.
Yeah. No.
Mayor Prokhorov, can you speak more?
Uh, on page fourteen, and, uh, I know this is kind of outdated, this is back in the quick wins. In early March, I know we had some of the threes that were renewed, and so I know our operating cash balance has come down. We're back going ahead, thought about that a little bit, where we're at roughly today, and then just we.
Oh, you, go ahead. I mean, you want me to come up there?
Yeah.
Hold on. Creating all my papers with them.
So part of one of them, sure, I was gonna, um, um, near probably was that, if anyone had any other information, it stood kind of, um.
They weren't, see what's happening?
Yeah, but I'll, I'll spare it now, but so as far as investments that have updated, so of that one that matured on the fourteenth of March, we had reinvested it. Um, and then it's another six months CD, uh, four point six six percent annual growth, so you'll see that on the March, um, update. And then this is pretty, I mean, I think it's pretty exciting news that I can invite you to, but we, um, through our wonderful local partnership with SCADP, we've actually kind of, um, when we've heard you guys talking about lowering the kind of the operational balance, right? And so we've known them, we've come up with a pretty awesome solution. Um, so the solution will, um, keep some of our operating funds liquid while also allowing us the opportunity to earn some investment income on operation, operational funds. Um, so we're gonna get what's called a sweep account, and the new sweep account will have a higher interest rate, so you have three point two five percent. Um, but then we will continue to track our funds and, um, past balances and take the more true idol funds and put them in the fixed rate investments as we've always done. So that's the we had a more specific question.
I think that sweep account works, money sits in, we can't earn a higher rate, and let's see, sweep over the second, after their check, and it goes by. So it's kind of a, it's a thing the banks had years ago, they kind of went out of phase for some reason, and then they're back.
Yeah.
I think that's very appreciative, they can pay them.
Yeah.
Nice. And also this one comment, uh, the permission of Blake mention about the numbers coming in on these current investments, some of these are a calendar year. So just that way, I just didn't, I don't know, I didn't just count it.
Yeah, they are staggering.
That's a good move, because I don't did have staggering degrees to make advantage of great fluctuations, so. Okay, good. Thanks. And on the sales tax, I just, um, just showed you, yeah, this is my second best, my favorite, we, that's not the September of last year, but I remember, right? But it just showed you the economy doing well, you're spending money. We're somewhat insulated from the problems on each post and bank issues and so on, just that, uh, see how people are spending money and how many people we think people come in to visit, so keep that up. On page twenty-four, and you see we got new homes being permitted for this so far for the first two months. Last year, we averaged over three percent. And I didn't know if it's just a seasonal thing, maybe I've got two builders on tape, and you're answering this question the way they, I think, from uh, with the department that, that, you do, but it's the time of year people are building homes, or what's your pulse? A new home, okay.
I, anecdotally, I would think probably a mix. Um. You know, right now it's tough to get concrete in, in the ground for one. Um, and then I think there's a lot of instability in the housing and house sales. Um, and that may play a role in whether people are building new homes. Yeah, I mean, winter time's always slow, in the beginning of the year certainly is, but I think if you, uh, if you hear the talk that's on the job sites, you'll be pretty excited about what might be happening this year. Uh, we have some apartment complexes that may be happening for students. Um, certainly some housing, uh, in the extent of, you know, some acreage, so quite a bit of housing just a typical, you know, three miles and flips that we have anyway, so I think it's gonna be as bright, if not brighter, this year than what we've been.
I think that's, uh, up on, updated, I think really helped as well, and there were a lot of vacant lots that were purchased. There's been a lot of infill in that subdivision last year as well.
Eric, you landers? Want to add anything to that, since you're kind of our interim CBLer now?
Sure, but so while there wasn't necessarily brand new permits pulled in the month of February and January, we still have a lot of activity going on. I think we did, um, over eighty, between eighty and ninety inspections in February alone, so that's pretty early in the year to be doing so many inspections, so we do have activity. It just may not be brand new permits being pulled.
I think you said maybe more doors this year, maybe apartment, doorwork, just single family homes, but nonetheless, we're creating a mix is what we like to see that happen, so. Very good.
Keep the bias here, right? Um, this day, Steve, to tell us about the death of the fire truck, we could.
Yes, uh, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, we had a group of three folks go up to Appleton, Wisconsin last week uh, to do a final inspection on, uh, what we're gonna call Engine Two. Um, we had good results. They had very few, uh, adjustments or modifications to do. Uh, it will be in, uh, Olathe this week. And, uh, I just talked to the salesman this afternoon. They'll probably have it for a couple of weeks, just to doing some tweaks on it. Uh, we, we are having them install some equipment on it up there in Olathe, but I would say within the next couple of weeks, you'll see a new fire truck in town. Yeah. So everything went well, and I appreciate your guys' support on this.
Yeah, good for you. Thanks. On page fifty-three, back to Dennis on your, uh, issue on the fourth, that it's and you think it's a threat, and I was just compelled to about what we mean by that.
Well, our hope was to see, uh, some donations, some donors, uh, some people that were interested in, uh, being a part of the fitness sport. Melissa has talked to, I'm gonna say the list is twenty-five long. And at this point in time, I think there's still some possibilities hanging out there. Uh, we've had some discussions about, uh, some other things. Uh, to help with that, with that thing as well. I think at the end of the day, we're going to probably get this done, but it's been an interesting process. We were really counting on, on some, um, some donors and, uh, while we may still see some of those, they have not been quick to respond. And so we'll, we'll see if I can get a dollar amount, how much more we need or not, how good it is. Well, the total dollar amount, our share was ninety-three thousand dollars. And so we needed to come up with at least a portion of that, is what we were shooting for, maybe not the whole amount, but a portion of that, and so, uh, like I say, uh, talking about some other funds that may be available and still, still hopeful that, that we see some, some donors in this process and and get this done. In fact, I got an email from, uh, from that group today, uh, wanting to discuss our timeline for, for getting this in the, on and running at the same point. We're still a little bit in limbo on that.
With some of that expense included in the construction, uh, which the purpose?
We are actually going to take that expense on ourselves. The, the only added expense over that, that money would be the concrete pad. Uh, our crews are capable not only of pouring that concrete pad, but of putting the fitness court together. And so that's about another ten thousand dollars savings right there. That, uh, they were asking for a crew to come in and nicely build this fitness store.
Okay, good. Did you see that swing down coming, people getting out, I think they did free reductions for a part of it.
We're working hard, Ed.
Looking forward to it, thank you. Uh, Paul D. So I know we got a, uh, mentioning about a home run on a R F D. You tell us more about that and the progress, or is that still kind of?
We've, we've submitted on that and just waiting for a response, so we haven't heard anything back since we went over to him, submitted.
Glad to be met, I appreciate your initiative on that, getting that, uh, focus put together to see, does that, what's a home run, what's a hit, all that, I think it's a great idea to have that, so hopefully they'll help us kind of quantify and make some more interest in that. Also, how are the M I H grants and these other ones?
We, we hope to hear either this week or first part of April. Uh, yeah, we got, of course, the one that's, uh, for about forty-seven apartments here in Ottawa, and that's one of the ones, that's the one F C D's submitted. And then, um, there's a project in Wellsville. But I see both of those, hopefully we'll find out the next ten to fourteen day.
Great. And then, uh, check out the library, uh, if you want to tell us about your hundred and fifty year celebration coming up this Friday.
I would love to, thank you. And we are having a library art event at the Carnegie Cultural Center, and that has been going on for a couple of weeks now. We're in our third week. This Friday, we are having the closing, uh, celebration of our hundred and fiftieth year. And we will have the Historical Society there. They will have several items that they've got that we have given them over the years and they've collected over the years for the Ottawa Library. And they will be in the upstairs area of the Carnegie. We have some great pictures of the history of the library in the main area of the Carnegie, and we will have refreshments that evening from six to eight, so I invite all of you to come join us.
Great. And there's one last one on Brave Buzz, Vanessa, you on? Yes, I see your picture up there, you bet. I would like to see how other local governments are participating, helping out financially. Are you seeing any changes from last year with some of these with Angie County, Richmond, from all the others, or is it gonna be about the same as last year?
Yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm a bit sick, so I'm zooming in from home. Um, we have an escalator built in with Anderson County. So that does go up every year. Pomona pays by dog, so it depends how many dogs they bring us.
Yeah. That's always a good idea, since we help those communities with our Brave Buzz, and I've been seeing them participate financially in that way as well, so. I think that is all I have. Mayor?
Thank you. Um. Thank you all, actually, for all your good questions. I don't have anything to add to it at this point, so what I want to do at this time, as I usually do it, there are indirectors that would like to come up and give us an update on their departments or anything they'd like to talk about, please come on up.
I would like to. Um. Hello, good afternoon. Um, pleasure to be here like always. Um, I didn't include something that I am really proud of in this report, so I'll make sure that it's on the monthly one, but this is a Q R code, um, for all of the social media posts, um, that the students at Ottawa University have been creating. Um, and so feel free to scan that, um, and take a look at those posts. That program is going really well. Um, business owners really, really like the extra help. Um, as well as students really enjoy the extra, um, being able to add that to their portfolio and that practical experience. Um, and so I've heard a lot of awesome feedback from that program, um, now that it's up and running, so that's super exciting. Um, we, I'm continuing on with the shop hashtag, or hashtag shop Ottawa Main Street. Um, and again, that's just a better showcase what we have at our shops on Main Street. Um, and then we ended the roundup to make a change. So I went and collected all of that money, um, and then something else that I worked on throughout the month of February was planting seeds in the OU greenhouse, um, and those seeds have all been planted in the OU greenhouse, and they're over there growing right now. Um, and on April twenty-second, uh, anybody and everybody is invited, and we're gonna have a big old plant day on Main Street, um, and that's when we're gonna spring up Main Street and bring the flowers from Loma Vista, as well as the greenhouse to Main Street, and we're gonna have a good old planting day. Um, that is also going to be the last day that I am in the office, and so you have one more report coming from me. Um, and I have a special fan for that one, but, um, um, I, this has been so fun, um, and so I'm looking forward to passing out my next month and kind of coming full circle with the greenhouse and out of you. So any, any other questions, or can I just kind of talk kind of fast, but? Awesome, all right, see you next month.
Any other directors?
We can write side out.
All right, as I say every month, there's seventy-eight to seventy-nine pages here of good information for what's happening in the city of Ottawa. If you, uh, start to wonder if there's anything good going on, read these papers, they'll tell you that certainly there is. The directors, thank you for the hard work that you've done throughout the month to give us this information. We appreciate it and, uh, enjoy reading it, really thank you, so I'll always speak for the other. Uh, thank you, certainly appreciate the information. Public on item two, which is our update to the municipal code seven dash one oh five on monuments, stones, and current. Director Hayley, good afternoon.
Good morning, Mr. [inaudible]. Good for you. Here is a simple update to the municipal code, meaning with monuments, cemeteries, um. We have a group of people that, that, uh, is called Home Stones, and, uh, do home cemetery have been, uh, cleaning and resetting some well, uh, antiquities for that word, but really one, uh, veteran headstones. Um, and what this, what that last statement on here does is, is providing, basically gives us the authority to grant them permission to do so. And it's obvious that it was an inquiry for individual wants to come in and do something like that. It kind of falls in in line with federal guidelines for cemetery. Um, and the, the other sentence that I lined up there is just authorized puts it in writing that, that we have the authority to reset and fix stones, and as you may know, that there's a lot of, uh, Families that don't live around here, there's, there's some stones in our cemeteries, if there's just something left. And if we need to reset those stones, we need to help the authorities.
Commissioners, any questions? All right, so Commissioners, at, at this point, our first look at it says an update to this, uh, this ordinance, but. If this is something that we are interested in, we would need to direct our label council to prepare ordinance, so, um, is that something that we want to go ahead and do? And then review it once it's been prepared? In fact, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Some comments for our city manager.
All right, Commissioners, good afternoon, I'm sorry I'm joining you by Zoom, but I want to take us back to the good old days, so there you go. Um. I have a, have a couple of things I want to say, mainly because I have the floor, so I guess you can always shut me off, but. Uh, first thing I want to talk to you about is I did not put the golf advisory board back on the agenda. In retrospect, I think you need to wait on that, and the city attorney and your new city manager. Uh, need to let you know when they think that it's ready for that to go. Um, there, there's still, we, we still don't have control of the processes out at the. Country Club, and, and Blaine, the city attorney, is working on a number of those issues. And I think that it would not be helpful. If the city, if you instituted a golf advisory board and the city was not in total control of the process of the, uh. Golf course, you just have to be patient, you have to let the city attorney and the new manager get that work through, and then you have a perfect. Ordinance here ready for you to pass, in my opinion, of course. Um. Couple of things. I want to thank you. And this community for the honor of serving as your city manager the last sixteen years. It has been an honor to serve our citizens, it's been an honor to work with our, um, city employees. It's been an honor to work with the city commissions that I have to work with. I would, uh, say that. Please remember that local government is the last bastion of democracy. And our democracy is in trouble. But you're the last bastion of local government, and local government, I strongly believe can save this democracy. It is, it is our job and local government, I believe, to give hope and possibilities to our community. So please remember that, please remember that, especially when, when things happen, when that, when you have requests made of you that. Um, don't really particularly have to do with the city. Um, I think it's important for you to be together on policymaking, it's important for you to be, um. To, to work together as a team and to speak with one voice. I think it's also, um, important to remember that, just because you may have one or two or even five emails on a subject. What I always think about are all those citizens that are not contacting us. All those citizens who are, who do not have a voice. And that maybe we should go out and we should talk to people outside of work. And we should ask our citizens questions about how they feel about a particular issue. But in the end. You're a great commission. You do an awesome job for this community. Um, every commission I have served in this community has done an awesome job. I would venture to say that it is the community that's had the best commissions I've worked in, much less city attorney and staff, okay? Um, the staff here has always been awesome, and I can't tell you how much. The city attorney has been able to help us and guide us all these years, and I know he will continue to do that, so. Thank you very much for indulging me, and, um, I wanted to be there in person, but I didn't really want to be sitting at the table with a mask.
Thank you. How was your city commissioners, Commissioner Graves?
Um, I just want to say thank you to Richard, and you know, you've always made. Our jobs, or at least in my opinion, very easy, for maybe the last six months, but that was really kind of hard, so. That, we can do without that, but, uh, just thank you for everything you've done, and, uh. I have always appreciated how you have treated us and how you treat staff and how you treat the public, and. I've learned a lot from you, so thank you for everything.
Love you.
And that's all I have.
Um, if there's anything that I've learned, um, being on the city commission for over twelve years, I know that, um, we're not in control of everything, and so. Richard, I just want you to know, I'm kind of glad you're not here today, because, um, I know you're a sensitive person, and, um, I too am sensitive, and I just don't know that I could get through comments. I'm having you sitting around this table with me, um. Uh, I think that there must be a book that in the making, that we need to have a Richard say, right, and last fashion of democracy, I think will be. In the, one of the very first pages, so I, I'm gonna work on that, and I know that you can do that in your spare time, starting next week, um. Uh, you know, truly one of the gifts that I've had, um. Being here in the city byways, knowing you, and, um. Once you hand over the reins to Brian, I'm gonna be so blessed to call you my friend, not just our city manager, but, um, my friend. And every city manager that I ever crossed path with, ever. Um, since the day I started in the city commission, has to live up to the test of what would Richard do? And I don't imagine that going away, and, uh, I imagine it'll be even stronger when she go, so thank you for your service.
I will echo the same sentiment, um. And like that, being my first year, uh, I know going to conferences kind of all around the state, uh, being at things, people see Ottawa on my name tag. And every single person who saw me had no idea who I was, they knew, no idea, their first thing. Mention you. Um, and I think that's a testament to you and the work you've done for Ottawa over the years, people see Ottawa in your name. And the government realm that becomes synonymous with Ottawa, and I really appreciate that and all your help. And this last year gave me where I am today, so. I as well, I was gonna say the last fashion of democracy, I want to get a shirt with that now. Yeah, I was gonna say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor President Stedman, we're definitely saying comments, I'm just, I'm glad you're gonna stay on the community. Hope you get involved in some capacity, and I know you will, uh. Being retired is a great life, I, I sure give that to the wife, my wife, probably, I'm gonna do the same things. I'm around the house pretty much, my wife will say, it's something I can do, it's really sweet, she always waves goodbye to me every day. But nonetheless, if, if you enjoy getting to know your wife more, I can enjoy good times, my wife getting to do things and going places, not having to worry about. If we don't get it done today, we get it done far, so that's a great, great life. So I just want to tell you, enjoy it, I know you will, and, uh, it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you, Mike, I, I just want to know if you tried to schedule a staff meeting with your wife?
Also, Richard, there's an opening on the Ottawa Main Street board, go see this.
Thank you, um, what do I add to what these four have already said, it's kind of like the questions earlier, I think they get all the information out, and I just kind of, you know, parrot what they say, so, um. As, as Commissioner Kayler said, uh, well, said it well earlier. I want to thank you, my friend, um, you know, in the six years that I've been on the commission, you know, it, it's, uh, uh, it's wonderful. To think of you more as a friend than our city manager more than anything, so it's, it's been great to have you here. Our jobs, as, as Commissioner Graves has said, is easier because of what you've done, what the department heads that you, you've implemented in here in, in, in the city of Ottawa. And certainly commissions down the road will, will benefit from what you've done for the city of Ottawa, so thank you, we, we greatly appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, you announced, it's April third, we have a study session at four PM, and then April fifth, we have a regular meeting at seven PM, if there anything else to come reporting to the commission.